Call a meeting to orders if we could. We're fortunate this evening to have the Pastor Ross Halbersma to deliver an invocation for us.
Thank you, sir.
Almighty Father, the Creator of the universe, we pause to say thank you for this community in which we live. We benefit from the foundations laid by the leaders of yesterday, and today we bridge for the future generations. May we be mindful tonight that you are aware of our thoughts, our words, our intent. Might it first please you? We thank you for the rain. We remember the communities in California tonight that are suffering because of the fires. May there be a sense of community and help, and we pray that through divine intervention there would be an end. Guide the discussion tonight. May it be a benefit to our community, to the Commonwealth, to the people who live here. You are a kind, kind Father. Thank you. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, Fisher, with the allegiance and the pledge, please, sir.
I pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
We retain a motion, adopt the agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Adopt the agenda. Consent agenda, any proposed changes?
No, sir.
Tentative agenda items for consent or tabs B, C, G, H, and O, how would the board like to handle this?
Move for approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
If approved as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is adopted. So some comments, did we have anyone sign up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker tonight, Kizzy Kane, to speak regarding freedom crossing.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello again. My name is Kizzy Kane, and last time I was in here, I believe that the property that's being built on had a clouded title. I understand this is just for information, so I'll make it brief, but just a short timeline that when this original land was deeded in 1918, it actually contained one and one-half acre, and it was consistent all the way up until the last heir of the property died in 1968. After the last heir passed away, the next family that moved in just started paying rent to an entity named Jasper, and that went on from 1970 up until 1977, which is when a final deed was made containing only one acre more or less in 1977 by a lady named Charlotte Carey, who deeded the land to Jasper. After doing some research on the land, no one is familiar with Charlotte Carey or the other heirs that are listed in reference to the original family. Not only that, there was a 25 easement that was removed from the property, again by Jasper, so he could complete his Pines Town Home Community was in the backyard. This is one example I have on the crossroads, there are many others. It's my hopes that we can shed some light on this and maybe help the families that were impacted by this and prevent further incorrect de-transfers from happening to smaller communities with lack of resources to defend themselves.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Just the one, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? Now we'll move to committee appointments. Old Dominion ASAP? Think we have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I would approve to, yeah, I would approve. I would move, I would move to approve the recommendation of appointing Deputy County Administrator Jay Tibbs to serve on the Old Dominion ASAP Policy Board and the Community Criminal Justice Board.
Thanks, sir. Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Tibbs to be appointed to those boards. MPO, alternate position, county representative. Have a recommendation, how would the board like to handle it?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that with the direction of Chris Tierney, that Mike Ruddy be appointed to fill the alternate position.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Ruddy be appointed. Old Dominion Valley Regional Commission, alternate position, county representative. Do we have a recommendation from Administrator Tierney?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for the appointment of a deputy county administrator, Jay Tibbs, to fill the alternate position.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Tibbs appointed to another fun one. Juvenile Detention Center Commission, alternate position, county representative.
Mr. Chairman, based on Mr. Tierney's recommendation, I would move to appoint Mr. Tibbs to fill the alternate position. He's on a roll.
Yep. Heard the motion is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That brings us to the Planning Commission, Red Bud.
Mr. Chairman, I will have an appointment next week, or at the next meeting. I've interviewed a few candidates, and so we'll have Megan have an appointment in the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Red Bud.
Mr. Chairman, same comments, I've interviewed a couple people, and I will have an appointment selection next, the next time we meet.
Thank you, sir. Sean E.
Not ready, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Community Policy Board Management Team. We're awaiting recommendations, it looks like, is that correct?
We're searching for apparent representative. We've not had any, we've put it out, but we've not had any responses up to this point.
All right. Thank you, sir. Historic Resource Advisory Board of Peckham.
We're still in the holding period.
Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to the end of this month's. There are no appointments due in October. EDA in November, I'd like to circle back to that one. Hanley Regional Library Board, it's a Frederick County representative. And we have a recommendation from the Library Board, how would the board like to handle that one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept the Regional Library Board's recommendation of Carol Fox, have her reappointed.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ms. Fox is appointed. Larry, I don't believe is eligible, he is not, so we will be looking for another member to serve on the Hanley Regional Library Board.
Mr. Chairman, we do have an application that we received today for Hanley Libraries, we'll be bringing that forward at the next meeting.
Great, wonderful.
Thank you.
Good news, thank you, sir. Planning Commission Member-at-Large, I'm working on that one. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready, not ready to make any recommendations for that quite yet.
Thank you, sir. December Board of Equalization. This is a recommendation that will be submitted to the judge.
Mr. Chairman, I will contact Mrs. Brumback, I have not done that yet, but I will contact her, see if she's willing to continue to serve on that.
All right, sir, thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken with Mr. Shirley, and he has agreed to serve another five-year term.
Okay. So we might move that we submit his name to the judge? Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, sir. Northwestern Services, Community Services Board. Three seats, Frederick County Representative. So if we could collectively work on that one.
Go.
We're good until December, but let's work on that.
Is that individual that, that term is expiring, are they ineligible? Because I couldn't tell from that, and I wonder if it's someone that we-
We will have to work on an answer to that one. They're limited to three consecutive terms, but I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer either, and I-
So we'll get that.
I wonder if they would be eligible.
Bring it back next time. Okay, thank you. All right, brings us to the end of the list. All right, that brings us to Parks and Recs Commission.
Mr. Chairman, the Parks and Rec Commission met on September 19th. At that point unanimously recommended approval of an easement, which has been requested by the sanitation authority on Clearbrook Park. The purpose of the easement would be to erect a water tank and access to the tank. If the board sees fit, you would need to schedule a public hearing before acting on the easement request.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions? All right. The requests would be to schedule a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we schedule the public hearing for-
Thank you, sir, second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
That will bring us to-
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the only item.
Sorry?
That was the only item on that.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to the Finance Committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee meeting was held on Wednesday, September 20th. Items number five, six, and seven were approved under consent agenda, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved.
Item number one was Shenandoah Valley Community Residents Request Real Property Tax Exemption, and the committee recommended forwarding this item to public hearing, and I would so move.
All right. Motion to schedule a public hearing for consideration of this issue, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion?
I guess in committee, we did not have total consensus of this item, I would like to share that with the committee, and there had been discussion that since we were trying to be consistent with how we handled other nonprofit agencies, that that should be a consideration of the board.
Are there any other comments? I'd have to suggest that if we're not ready to consider it, that we shouldn't schedule a public hearing for it, but if we're ready to consider it, we should. If that helps, are we ready to vote? Supervisor Ewing?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Slaughter?
No.
Chair votes no, motion fails. We won't be considering that one.
All right, sir. That'll take us then to item number three, the Public Works Director Request a General Fund Supplemental Appropriation in the amount of $50,000. The amount represents funds donated to the Frederick County Esther Boyd Animal Shelter and will be used for the engineering and architectural services to develop a site plan and architectural plans for building and addition at the shelter. No local funds required. The item was approved by the Public Works Committee, and the Finance Committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Motion to approve is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? Are we ready? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number four, the Public Works Director Request a General Fund Supplemental Appropriation in the amount of $10,000. This amount represents funds donated to the Frederick County Esther Boyd Animal Shelter and will be used to expand the existing spay and neuter program. No local funds required. This item was approved by the Public Works Committee, and the Finance Committee also recommended approval, and I would so move.
Motion to approve is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
That'll take us then to item number eight. Discussion is, was requested on committee and commission compensation. There was information in your packet, the information in your packet coincided with the budget appropriations for fiscal year 2018, and the committee recommended the changes that were in your packet, and I would so move.
So motion to adopt the changes as proposed, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number 10 indicates that there was no committee action required. However, the Finance Committee reviewed the real property tax relief at their August meeting, and there was a recommendation out of the committee to move forward. It did not involve dollar amounts, but it simply involved technical amendments to the code. Therefore, I would offer a motion for item number 10, that we authorize a public hearing on the technical amendment, amendments that would accompany the code.
All right, heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
The second, discussion?
There is also information at your seat that was provided. It was item number seven on the August agenda, and the technical information is also included at your, at your seat.
Any discussion? Questions? Are we ready? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Okay, that will take us then to item number 13. The Frederick County Public School Finance Director Request a School Operating Fund and General Fund Supplemental Appropriation in the amount of $285,003.55. This amount represents grant fund received during fiscal year 2017 for specific purposes. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
That will take us to item number 15. The finance, excuse me, the Frederick County Public Schools Finance Director Request School Operating Fund Supplemental Appropriation in the amount of $502,498.66. This amount represents the fiscal year 2018 preschool expansion grant. No local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question, once the grant runs out, is the county to be obligated to continue this program?
I don't see how we could be obligated to.
Are we going to be expected to?
That discussion typically tends to follow, but I'm not certain of that answer.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Camery is here, and I don't know if that question should be referred to.
We welcome you and appreciate your offering to try.
Sorry, sure. These grant awards have been given to us, but there is no strings attached saying that we have to extend them out after a period of time, so the answer is no.
Has there been discussion by the school board of wanting to continue it on local funds?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Supervisor Dunn?
Is this a, I believe this is a two-year grant, can you tell me the time for the frame for the grant? The expected timeframe?
For this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
And then after that, is there a commitment or not by the funding group?
There's no commitment at all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And one other question, I understand that this is also for pre-K, three and four-year-olds, is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. Supervisor Fisher?
And I guess just a little bit more on the couple of questions answered, or asked already, that once we start this, though, does this thing just get rolled over in the third year where it just becomes a budget request? And to continue, I mean, once you start these things, sometimes it's hard to stop them. And I've just, I'm not assured, I guess, that once you get this started, that at the end of the second year, then the $500,000 is going to be in our budget for that year. That's just the concern, it's one of those things, it rolls back on the locality, sounds good to start with, but the long-term, so I'm just, in your opinion, once you start this, going to be hard to quit at three years?
Well, I have, I have to say, as far as the federal funding, since this is where these funds are coming from, there is nothing to say that the federal funding will not continue for the next several years either. Even though we have two more years left on this, it doesn't mean federal funding will not continue, but there hasn't been any discussion as far as what happens after the two years. We already have $285,000 appropriated in last year to start the preschool. This is the final award that's already happening for this year, so it makes the full grant award about $785,000.
But I'm looking for your opinion, once we start this, it'd be hard to stop it. I'm not counting on any federal thing, because I, you know.
I really couldn't answer that. I mean, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing?
Is this the initial, beginning of the program?
The $285,000 were received at the end of FY17 was the initial amount. This is in addition to that.
This is the start of the program.
So this is the start for the first year. It should carry us through the first year.
And this is pre-kindergarten?
Yes, preschool.
Then next year it'll be pre-pre-kindergarten?
It's still preschool.
It won't be long until we'll be adopting kids right from birth and sending them right on through to the-
Yeah, the two years in a row are for the same age, age groups.
Didn't want to put you on the spot, but-
Mrs. Camery? Yes. Has the program already started?
Yes, yes, it's, it's on the same schedule as the school year.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the fact that the schools is trying to help. Kids may be at risk out, but I have not, I've spoken out about this, I am not for, because too many federal grants come with conditions. They don't let the localities decide how best to implement that program. They come with conditions, we have to hire teachers, we have to hire administrators, and I echo Supervisor Fisher's thoughts that once a federal program is started, it's rarely ever stopped, and so I will not be supporting this budget adjustment.
Other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, how would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we still in the discussion, discussion mode?
Yes.
Okay. Like Mr. Lofton, I have concerns on this, simply because you're going to have a budget proposal, the two years hence, is going to require a commitment by the localities to fund, what's going to require a commitment by the federal agency to fund. The federal agency right now is $20 trillion in debt, so they're giving away money that they don't have, they're having to borrow that money essentially to fund additional items. Once the program gets started, as Mr. Fisher says, it's, they're hard to stop. I also think that it's inappropriate for three-year-olds and four-year-olds, there are parents who have an obligation to take care of their children, there are, there are private daycare, there are private school facilities that are available as options. I just don't think this is a good use of public money to going into a pre-kindergarten situation, and I was just strongly urging my colleagues to, to vote no on this. It's, we don't have the money to do this, and although it's a hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars there, another half million dollars on our budget would be significant, and the federal government does not have the money. They're giving, they are printing money literally, which they don't have, so like Mr. Lofton, I'm going to vote no on this, and I hope my colleagues would do the same. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Are we ready? Supervisor Slaughter?
No.
Wells? Supervisor Wells?
Aye, yes.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Ewing?
No.
Chair votes aye, the motion fails. That will bring us-
To item number 16. The Frederick County Finance Director Request School Operating Fund Supplemental Appropriation in the amount of $100,000. This amount represents a grant award from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. No local funds are required. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the recommendation, the motion is there a second?
Second.
And the second, discussion? Is there any? Supervisor Ewing? I'm sorry?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is this just a one-time funding for a special program, it's not a continuation to be continued or any? The National Oceanic?
Thank you.
I thought I could yell, but I don't know that that's really beneficial.
The folks at home can't hear that.
Okay. This was a two-year grant that ran out last year, and some localities in Virginia did not spend all their money, whereas we did, and so they redistributed to those localities that did, so this is just a one-year for this year.
No continuation, continuation?
Unless, unless, again, other localities don't spend their money, and they round it back up to push it back out again.
Nothing expected from the county, though?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Better done.
Mr. Ewing? I had a conversation with Mr. Tibbs earlier today, asking the same question, and his comment was, this is a one-time situation, if the program is not continued next year, there's no commitment by the county to do anything. It's a good program, but if it is not funded, there's no need to continue. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And that would conclude my report, sir.
Thank you. All right. That will bring us to Transportation Committee report. Mr. Bishop.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the board. We had a fairly busy transportation committee this last time around, so we've got a few things for you to consider. The first of which is a two-parter, if you will, related to a limited access break in the Kernstown area at Route 11, where the Route 37 ramp meets Route 11 South, as you can see on the screen to your left. The first action before you is to determine whether you wish to support a petition to the Commonwealth Transportation Board to allow that limited access break. Currently, the VDOT-controlled limited access line covers nearly the full frontage of the property in question, where you see the new entrance coming in on the map there. And so that approval is required for them to be able to get the entrance. Currently. Currently, the property does have access via Commonwealth Court. However, the traffic studies do indicate that there would be some benefit to allowing an access break here. And of course, the second part of your agenda item does deal with part of how they want to meet the needs that would be required. Now, if I could go to another graphic here. It's just a bit of a zoom in to try and make it a little bit easier to see what the applicant would be doing to make this access break work from a traffic perspective. The first of which, of course, is the access break itself, which would connect back, as shown on the previous map, all the way to Commonwealth Court. Improvements include, part of that would be an upgrade to the signalization. Right now, it's a three-leg signalized intersection, it would become a four-leg, so they would have to upgrade the signal. They would be providing right and left turn lanes into the, into the access point. Now, in addition to that, are the items that they're asking for assistance through revenue sharing on, your second action tonight. The first of those is the widening of Route 11 South itself, between Commonwealth Court and Route 37, the additional southbound lane. And the section, second portion of that is the additional ramp off of Route 37 itself. Those are the two, two items that are part of the revenue sharing application. However, all of these items would be getting put in place as part of the limited access break.
End it?
That's it, sir.
Okay, questions for Mr. Bishop?
Of course.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
When I look at the revenue sharing agreement, item 2B of the revenue sharing agreement states that, in accordance with 4B of this agreement, Winchester 81 shall cover 100% of all costs over and above the matching funds. So, so that would lead you to believe that 100% of whatever the cost exceed. Item 4B says that after the award of the contract for the projects, Winchester 81 shall cover 100% of all reasonable costs approved by Winchester 81, over and above the state matching funds, up to $50,000, which is actually less than 5% of the total amount of the project cost.
Yes, ma'am.
Who would bear the cost, should they exceed the $50,000 cap?
I should note that that's a first draft of the agreement. County attorney and I are still working with the applicant on a final agreement, which we would bring to the board before we executed anything, in which the only thing that's acceptable to us is that the county have no exposure on that. So the 50,000 cap is, is not acceptable to that, to us. We've already conveyed that back to the applicant. What we're seeking tonight is just the ability to apply for the revenue sharing funds. We would still be coming back to the board to ratify any agreement, and of course, pending any acceptable agreement to the board, we would not move forward with the project.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Other questions? Anyone? All right, sir. Do you gentlemen have anything? Sir?
My name is Michael Coglan. I'm an attorney with Walsh, Calucci, Lubalay &amp; Walsh, and I'm here on behalf of the, the requestor, if you will, Winchester 81. We believe that, on balance, this is a benefit to this particular area of the county by providing access where it's proposed. You actually create a better traffic situation. You relieve the traffic that could end up on Commonwealth Court exiting at Route 11. In addition, we think that this will help advance economic development in this particular area. And what we've proposed to VDOT and to the county in terms of mitigation, we think actually goes over and above mitigation with the widening of Route 11 and with an additional lane on the ramp. So we think that this is, you know, a good deal for everyone involved, and we've worked very hard with the county and VDOT, and we appreciate everyone's attention and efforts to this. Supervisor McCann, Slaughter. The latest agreement that we've presented to the county in draft form eliminates any cap that our client would be willing to bear. So in, in reality, there's no financial liability to the county if the revenue sharing application is approved, and then the agreement moves forward.
Thank you.
I'm available for any other questions. Our engineer's here, and so is our traffic consultant.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Supervisor Dunn.
I just had one question.
Yes, sir.
In the discussions you've had with VDOT, with Mr. Bishop, et cetera, has there been any opposition?
I'll, I'll respond to that, that.
Concerns, let me, let me rephrase it. Opposition, concerns, et cetera.
When you're working with the Virginia Department of Transportation on transportation issues, and you're proposing something that isn't currently allowed, there's always concerns. I think that where we are in our discussions, they're very mature, and we think that we've addressed all of those concerns. There've been some comments on the traffic study that supports, you know, the break, but in our view, those are fairly minor. So, you know, I, I think that where we are, all concerns have been addressed. And it hasn't ever been, no, this is not something that we'll ever support, we wouldn't be here. And I don't think Mr. Bishop would have brought this to the board if that's where we stood.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question. In the agreement, and Mr. Bishop had said that we're, we're at, what we've received is a draft agreement, I presume that the agreement that will be brought to the board would not include a phasing of the access right-of-way and all the other improvements, that it would all happen simultaneously?
And the agreement itself is, in terms of with the county, is fairly straightforward. It's a revenue sharing application. If the money gets approved, then VDOT manages the project, and then it just proceeds on. What we expect will happen with the Commonwealth Transportation Board is that their resolution approving the access break will have certain conditions on us, and that, in general, our, what I call, entrance improvements, the right-in, or right, right turn lane in, left turn lane into the site, and then our entrance itself would have to be constructed prior to traffic being able to use that. And then as for the ramp and the Route 11 improvements, what we, where we think that's going to land is that the funding for that by our client will have to have been committed before any, any access onto the site can, can begin. And committed meaning, we've posted, you know, our share of the, of our costs, which would be in the form of cash or a letter of credit or bond.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Bishop. Can you go back to your little diagram there and show us, in its expanded view, what the applicant was speaking of as far as the Commonwealth Transportation Board, their support would probably be contingent upon certain things happening? Can you point those out?
Yes, sir. The specific items, which are also detailed in your resolution, are the addition of the southbound lane to Route 11 between Commonwealth Court and Route 37 ramp. I would note that does also include some access management work to clean up some of the entrances along there. It includes the left turn lane into the site. It includes the northbound right turn lane into the site. It does include a fair amount of restriping and remarking of Route 11 between Commonwealth Court and the ramps, and it includes the construction of the additional ramp off of Route 37 onto Route 11.
Okay, and that is included in our resolution, our support is contingent upon all that happening?
Yes, sir. Your, your, I believe it's your, your third, whereas the improvements depicted on the attached map, which this graphic is going, is to be attached to your resolution. In addition, the signalization upgrades will be implemented upon approval of the access break by the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And whereas those improvements include the following, and then it goes down through all those improvements. That was done for a particular reason, because staff didn't want the board to be in a position where you'd given a fairly vanilla blessing of the break. And then, as things progressed forward with VDOT and the Commonwealth Transportation Board, that our understanding of things may shift as those agreements came in place. So it's fairly detailed to allow this, if that situation changes, they would need to come back before you to find out if you're still supportive of the break under some new condition.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more comments or discussion, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution of support for the access, right-of-way access break, contentious upon all improvements being implemented, as Mr. Bishop has discussed.
All right, heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
I just want one discussion item, if I may, before you take the roll call. Again, this would, you would make sure in this agreement, or whatever comes back to our board for the revenue sharing, that the county taxpayers would not have any liability as far as this ceiling of the $50,000. Is that correct?
That is, that is staff's directive from the beginning through the end, and we would still be bringing this, this agreement to you to lay eyes upon and bless, as Transportation Committee and Board, as we take it through the process.
But I might point out, this, this motion is not.
I understand, I understand.
This is just for the access break.
Oh, this is just for the access, not for the revenue sharing.
The current motion is speaking just to the application or endorsement of the resolution of support.
But they both.
We're going to give it next.
Okay, I just don't want to get the cart before the horse and approval.
Understood.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, sir.
This is simply an application, which will come back to the board for further review and a further vote before anything is finished. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You're voting right now on a resolution to support or not the access break.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Do you want to clarify?
Well, I, there's, there's really two steps to this. The first step is whether or not the board supports that layout and that access break. You know, there's arguments to be made that the transportation network works better with this access break than without. That's the, that's the conclusion that the Transportation Committee drew. So the first hurdle for the applicant is to get the Commonwealth Transportation Board to grant that access. So they really stand very little chance of getting that without the board's endorsement. So the first question for you is, do you support that access break? The, the second step is.
Can we come to the second step? Let's deal with the first one, if, if we might, please?
Right, and that's what I was trying to explain. This is the horse before the cart, because without the access break, the revenue sharing is a moot point.
Right.
It's the way.
We're clear now? We're endorsing?
Resolution for the access break.
There was, there was one other item, I remember, just a detail. But without this access break, Commonwealth Court and Valley Avenue eventually fails.
Yes.
It can't handle it. So that's why the committee, I think, one of the primary things that was supporting this access break.
Yes, sir, that's accurate.
Discussion to the access break, and then we'll continue with the next step.
I might add to Mr. Fisher's comments there, that this land is already zoned. It can be developed as is right now, even without this entrance on Route 11.
Yes, sir.
And as Supervisor Fisher has said, they would access Route 11 through Commonwealth Court, which would completely fail the intersection.
That's what the traffic analysis contends.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? endorsement of the access break? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Now, endorsing the application for revenue sharing funds, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir. For your revenue sharing application, you do have a resolution of support for revenue sharing that's been passed out to you. I apologize, we didn't have the numbers to put into it when your agenda went outside to pass it out this evening. The applicant has completed a cost estimate for those two portions I mentioned before, which I'll go back to the map in one second to reiterate those. And that cost estimate comes to 1.7, a little, little over 1.7 million dollars, which I have rounded up for the purposes of the application to $1,701,000. So you have before you a resolution for half of that amount, because revenue sharing is 50/50 program. And just by way of reiteration, that application doesn't apply to signalization and the internal road network and the right turn lane and whatnot, and it, it applies to the widening of Route 11, and it applies to the ramp from Route 37. Those are the things that we're applying for, and that's what that cost estimate is tied to. And that doesn't mean that the rest of this isn't supposed to go in, but these are the items that we've been asked for assistance with, should the board choose to submit the application.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Bishop?
So just to confirm, half of the 1.7 is $850,000. So the cost to the county would be approximately that, correct? If this goes through?
That's, that's where the agreement discussion comes in. There is a first draft of the agreement in your application, in your packet, which we were discussing earlier. We have received an updated draft, as Mr. Coglan noted, that removes one of the concerning items from there. However, the agreement that we put in place, even though this is a VDOT-managed project, would be that any cost overruns, anything like that, don't come from Frederick County, they come from the applicant. So in this scenario, the county is simply a conduit to achieve state funds, not a backstop for the applicant's funding of the project.
And, and Mr. Bishop, just to continue what Mr. Fisher had said, if this does not go through, and this population is continuing to increase from 83,000 today to 120,000 down a year, this area will become further congested, and there'll be simply a further backlog on traffic. Is that correct? Is that what the study shows?
Yes, sir. It's definitely a challenged area. If this, if this parcel were to develop as by right, it would have a significant negative impact on its existing access.
But this is a positive use of dollars to try to get traffic to, to continue to flow as this county, in that area grows.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If, if I may ask Mr. Bishop to clarify, I'll make sure I'm right.
Yes, sir.
We're not actually voting on a revenue sharing agreement tonight.
That's correct.
What we're doing by this vote is allowing staff to apply for a revenue sharing project. If successful, then we would see a revenue sharing agreement with the applicant, which would spell out the particular duties of each party, and at that point, we can make sure that there are no charges to the taxpayers of Frederick County. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. All you're doing tonight is unleashing your staff, if you will, to go ahead and apply for the funds. We will be back later with an agreement, which, if not satisfactory, then we can turn around and say, sorry, VDOT, no harm, no foul, we don't need these dollars.
Okay. And one more item. If, if, well, I think you've just said it. If, in fact, we comes back, the agreement says, we're not happy with this agreement, but the reason, we don't have to take it, but the reason we're asking for this now is, the timeframe to submit for revenue sharing is what?
November 1st is our application deadline.
So if we miss this application period, we wait two years?
Two more years.
Right. Which would make the project probably unfeasible at that point.
Potentially.
Other questions of Mr. Bishop?
All right. Do we need to? Would a motion be crafted to direct staff to apply for a revenue sharing project for this particular request?
Think that works?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right. I think that brings us to the end of.
I'll let Mr. Bishop, their second item that was forwarded to the board for action is the SmartScale program update. And I'll let Mr. Bishop go briefly into what SmartScale actually is, and how the new regulations could impact the county. And you can expand on that.
Yes, sir. The SmartScale program, or SmartScale Portal, is the, not as new anymore, we've just gone through our second round of how we apply for transportation funds to make it into the six-year program for Frederick County. As, as with last time, they are, they are recommending some tweaks and changes to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, they, meaning VDOT staff. And so we've had an opportunity to review what has been suggested thus far, and point those out to Transportation Committee. I would note that this has also been making its way through the Regional Commission and the Metropolitan Planning Organization as well. But key concerns, probably the number one concern, although we have had some feedback on it already, is the reduction in how many projects you can apply for. on it already, is the reduction in how many projects you can apply for. In the past two rounds, in round one, Frederick County applied for five projects, and in round two, Frederick County applied for nine projects plus a couple more through the Regional Commission, or the MPO rather. With this new cap of four, there's definitely some concern that while we could still take advantage of the Regional Commission and the MPO, we are not the only members of those localities, so I do have some concern that that's going to clip our wings a bit, for lack of a more eloquent, eloquent way to put it. One note that I have concern about is per the presentation that we've been provided is that VDOT staff is still working on additional recommendations, which they could bring before the CTB in October at their October meeting, even though they're asking for your comments by October 20th. So, there could be potential changes that still come forth that you will have not had the opportunity to weigh in on, so that's a concern. One of the concerns we have is the congestion factor. There previously was a bit of a balancing action taking place to where long-range planning wasn't necessarily at a disadvantage to near-term fixes. That's being removed, so while, from like, staff gets it, you know, you, you have to fix the things that are the problems now, it's, as a planner, it's, it's, it's not really great for long-range planning either, so I think some balance that was there was a good thing. In terms of impact potentially on localities, to receive points for being consistent with local planning, projects do have to be specifically called out in the comprehensive plan. We've done pretty well with that to date, but that's an additional thing we'll need to watch as we're doing these new applications. And finally, perhaps the, what could be a bigger impact for particularly larger projects is the project readiness factor. You may recall, one of the things about the six-year program in the past, which VDOT has done away with through SmartScale, is that a project could be in the six-year program for preliminary engineering, for environmental, for any number of study-level things. That's not true anymore. When a project makes it into the six-year program, it is for full funding or no funding. So, this project readiness factor is basically to indicate that if you want an interchange, you need to have an interchange justification report to go with it. Now, if you're not familiar with an interchange justification report, the last one in this region was about 3 million. If you want a signal, you need a signal warrants analysis to go with it, and that's a more affordable analysis, but it's still an impact to the board. So, I just wanted to make sure I point that out as potential impacts that, that you may have. Now, this was brought forward as a consensus, not a specific recommendation that the board make comment, because frankly, I, I know that folks have had conversations with Mr. Whitworth, and we weren't quite sure where the board would want to go. However, I just, this is just us pointing out our concerns if the board should choose to direct staff to send something forward to the Commonwealth Transportation Board.
Questions of Mr. Bishop? Yes, sir.
A few weeks ago, you and Mr. Lofton had a transportation committee, at least in the public record, it indicated that you were being forced to choose between large projects and small projects in this decrease in the number, in the amount of projects that were available. One of the questions I would ask you and Mr. Lofton is, can you go and remedy that? I.e., can you say, for a certain amount of dollars, some of them will be allocated towards small projects, but some of them will be allocated toward large projects because we need both, and 10 small projects might eat up the cost for one or two large projects, which is a detriment to the county. So, that was a concern I had when I was reading the comments in the paper, and if you or Mr. Lofton or somebody else here has some comments to address that, that was my concern. How do you address both? I don't think it's a neither or, and so, working together with VDOT? Can you help to address that if you have any comments, Mr. Bishop? Pro or con, accurate or inaccurate, I appreciate it.
You're accurate that there's a, a built-in bias towards smaller projects. The reason for that is, is that it's completely designed as a bang-for-the-buck scenario, which typically is smaller projects are always going to have a larger bang for the buck than the hidden, than a larger project. Even 277, which is our largest project that we currently have since we've, SmartScale has come in, that did not originally score in. Mr. Whitworth had to do extra work to, to get that project funded for us. The typical approved project under SmartScale is 5 million dollars or less. Where you are seeing large-scale projects, there is often, whether it be local money, whether it be, Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads have, not foundation money, but they have a special taxing, taxing district of their own that they've, fund, that they are able to fund transportation items for. So, they, they kick in money, basically, which helps their score, which would help the score on any project. But in terms of easily being able to say, this is what we'd like, we'd like to do some large and some small, it's, it's simply not designed that way.
Two other, Mr. Chairman, two other quick comments then. So, for example, I-37 on the eastern side, the uncompleted portion, which was laid out very well on paper, but now is having buffers as people try to build in there.
Correct.
That would be hard to put through in the current scenario, is that correct?
It's, it's been difficult. We've, we've applied for exit 310 to 522 twice now and been unsuccessful both times.
And since we have a heavy traffic on I-81, which goes through North Frederick County, having some options on large-scale projects, which would help everybody in Frederick County and in this part of the state, would be helpful? So, is there anything that you can do, or the committee can do, that could help you, if it's the consensus, to include large-scale projects in this so that it helps this area as it continues to grow from 83,000 to 120,000, 130,000 over the next 20 years? That's going to be a huge impact, and have a lot of small-scale projects at the expense of large-scale projects will cause a significant hardship, I believe, travel-wise in this community.
The projects, you mentioned 81. The projects, if you look at 81, for the most part, that have been funded, tend to be things like ramp extensions. I refer to them as Band-Aid projects because basically that's what they are. You're, you're not seeing the, the major capacity improvements, such as a Route 37 would be, such as an 81 widening would be. And right now, the way the program's designed, the only apparent way to make those more competitive is to be able to come in with a much stronger economic development score or contribute funds to the project.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Anyone else? So, I do. How do you propose to deliver your concerns to the Commonwealth Transportation Board?
I would suggest a letter from the county administrator's office, or the chairman would suffice.
Okay. And that's, that's what you're looking for the authorization to do?
Assuming the board wishes to be heard on these issues, yes.
I understand the question. Wanted to know how you plan to deliver them. Sir, you've heard the request. How would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman, if, is there any discussion before I make?
We don't have a motion yet.
I may make a motion. I make a motion to direct staff to comment to the Commonwealth Transportation Board about the policy changes to the SmartScale program as outlined in Mr. Bishop's presentation.
Thanks, sir. Second? In the second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Lofton, that would, that would include the concerns that I've just raised or not? Would that include the concerns on the large project, small project concerns?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Thank you, sir. Is there more?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well done. Thank you.
Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund, specifically agreement execution, because you have two Transportation Partnership Opportunity Funds before you this evening. This is regarding the award we have been granted of 2 million dollars toward the Renaissance Drive project. Given that that application was given under the current governor, we would like to go ahead and get this agreement executed before there's a change in the State House, so that's why that's before you this evening. I would note that the funds cannot be accessed until you have fully expended the revenue sharing dollars that you have on that project. These are the funds that basically get you from an at-grade crossing to a bridge, and also that there's no local liability for the clawback provisions of the agreement until you've actually spent some of those dollars. So, I would note that as well. I did insert a map just to remind folks, Renaissance Drive, connecting Valley Pike and Shady Elm Road. The yellow is the piece that you've previously completed under revenue sharing, and the blue is the section that we are working toward completing. Now, there are a number of components to that project. You heard me reference the revenue sharing earlier. As you know, those revenue sharing dollars are not currently fully matched. We have received a, a land use application in, in the department, which, which may address that as you get to concern that, assuming all those items together. That'll be the last piece in the puzzle before we're asking you to move forward on the project.
Your request is that?
We are seeking?
We sign the agreement.
To sign the agreement.
Nothing more at this point.
Nothing more than to execute the agreement.
Other questions of Mr. Bishop? Supervisor Ewing?
No liability to the county at this point.
By signature. Now, spend it before you can be liable for it.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Supervisor Slaughter?
This is simply the agreement to apply for the revenue sharing funds.
No, no.
No, ma'am. These are previously approved funds. We're executing the agreement, which would allow us to spend them, but we are not proposing to spend them at this time. We're simply getting the agreement executed before there's a change of governor.
Okay. In, in Transportation Committee, we've talked about whether there is a backstop to the taxpayers of Frederick County if there are cost overruns. Is this applicable to what you are trying to accomplish this evening?
If you look at this project in its totality, there is not a backstop in the sense that there is with the one I'm about to talk to you with or the one that we were talking about earlier. This is a project that's built up of a number of different funding sources, of which this is just one.
If, if I could try and help?
Go, go ahead. Which one of you want to go? Ms. Lofton? Then we'll come back to you.
If I may, this has been a long, arduous process here. We're getting down to where I think we might finally be able to get some action on this roadway, which is so sorely needed out in that area. But to begin with, as, as Mr. Bishop has said, the surrounding properties that have developed have proffered money to be put into transportation improvements. Specifically, at the beginning, we were talking about an at-grade crossing from Shady Elm Road over to Route 11, and the proffer money was based upon those costs. Additionally, as the project moved forward, we actually thought it would be a great idea to have a bridge across a railroad because it's much safer, it's more convenient, it's faster for traffic. So, we applied to the governor's office for these Transportation Partnership Opportunity Funds when the America Wouldn Mark Project came in. The, the TPOF funds, this agreement, we signed this agreement saying, we accept the money. We're not obligated to take this money. In fact, this is last dollar. All proffer money has to be spent, all revenue sharing money has to be spent before we touch a dollar, before they're going to give us a dollar, and this is a reimbursement grant, right?
That's correct, sir.
So, before we touch a penny of these monies, all the other monies have to be spent. My outlook on this is, if we go ahead and say, we'll, we'll take the money, if we put the project up for bid, if the project comes back in, in total, more than all the proffer, revenue sharing and TPOF monies combined is, we're not obligated to take this money. We can say, we don't have the money to do that. We could actually probably backpedal a little bit and go with the at-grade crossing because we might have enough money to do that, hopefully. So, this is not obligating us or the taxpayers for any money at this point.
I understand what you're saying. May I ask another question?
Let's let Mr. Tierney make his comments, and then we will come right to that.
Well, I think, Mr. Lofton covered a lot of what I would have offered. Really, why this is here tonight is, there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. A number of them are beginning to come into place. They're not all there. But our, our issue is, if we don't lock in this TPOF, Transportation Opportunity Fund money, by executing the agreement, chances are we'll lose them. And so, our hope is, we can execute the agreement and work diligently to get the other pieces of the puzzle in place. If they don't get in place, we haven't spent this money and we can return it. But if we don't execute the agreement, then the whole deal's off because the funds go away when the governor leaves office. So, that's, that's really where we are.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Slaughter?
Thank you. I guess the concern that I have is, if we start the project and everything, the bids come back, and we start this project, and there are cost overruns, where are we left? Where are the taxpayers left?
Well, let me see, if I understand, I've heard a lot. We have this money available, if we get it, that we don't have to, we don't have to use it.
No.
If we get all the proffer money and everybody puts up the money and everything happens, everybody's happy. If that doesn't happen, then this, we say, we don't want the money, and then we give it back. The project dies and that's it.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. That's probably not going to happen. Probably what's going to happen is, is we're going to be close, and then we're going to say, we're so close, maybe we use this amount of money, matching funds out of that program. We haven't talked about that tonight, but that's usually the way things happen. So, I'm saying, if you don't accept this, you don't have any opportunity, the only opportunity you have is for the money to come from the resources, from proffers and so forth and so on, from, from the developers who are building there. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. And frankly, if we were in a situation where we had gotten to where we were moving forward on the project, and we ended up in that situation with costs relative to the amount of money, we'd be back talking to you all for the next steps.
So, the cost of the taxpayer, whatever that number is that comes in from the developer, if you then say, there's not enough, but you need this road, so you put in, you go to this fund and take money out, you're now matching back that money.
I understand that, but?
That's what I'm saying.
There's, there's always cost overruns beyond what a project initially starts out to be.
Right.
And, and there's no backstop for this project.
Even with the matching funds, is what you're saying? That's what I'm saying.
I hesitate to say this because there's always a first one, but I, I would like to?
I understand, you've come in under.
Point out, we have come in under on our projects so far, that there's always a first one, but we've, we've done a pretty good job of remaining conservative in our cost estimates. But, like I said, there's always a first one.
Mr. Tierney, do you have something else you want to add?
Well, it, it, there is no guarantee, if we proceed down this path, that in the end, the county would not be in a position where they had to make a decision whether to move forward with the project or scrap it because there's taxpayer money that's going to have to be put up. That possibility, you, we can't sit here and promise you that that won't be where we could end up. It's a possibility.
That switch?
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
But, but do we have that? I hear what Mr. Tierney's saying, but does, do we as the board have the power, if you will, to stop that before we get to the point where?
Once?
You see what I'm saying? In other words, we start the, we get the money, the project started, you, it's kind of like we go back to the, the school issue. It's awfully hard to say, we're not going to do that. We put this much into it.
Worst-case scenario would be, we apply for, well, we've already got the revenue sharing, we have most of the match, assuming we get the rest of it, right, for the revenue sharing piece of the funding. That's, that's the money we would spend first.
Right.
If we move forward, begin design and so forth. The TPOF money, the governor transportation opportunity money, 2, 2 million dollars, I believe.
Right.
We, we have to spend all of the locally generated money, the, the proffer funds and the match from the state, before we can touch this 2 million dollars. The, the worst-case thing would be, we, we, we get all the approvals in place, we have all the funding in hand, we begin the design, we get partway into the design, and we realize we've, you know, we underestimated, the bridge is going to cost more, or, you know, inflation hits us and we, we are short. That is the point where we would, we could pull the plug at that point, but the money that we had spent of state funds, we owe the state back at that point. If the road doesn't be, get built to fruition and completed, the state wants their money back. So, that's where we could get caught holding the bag. That is a potential.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
The, the funds you're talking about haven't paid back, Mr. Tierney, are revenue sharing funds.
Yes, sir.
Because actually, this is a reimbursement grant. The state doesn't give us any of this money until after we've spent it. So, I think there are enough safeguards in place that we will know in plenty of time how this project moves forward. And so, like I said, if we don't sign this agreement, there is no chance we'll put a bridge across Renaissance Drive. No chance.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Bishop, on the area that's to the right or north side of your blue dots.
Yes, sir.
That area there is meant to be developed commercially, correct?
To the north, yes, that's the artillery parcel.
Right.
Some of their proffer dollars are part of this package.
So, I remember this when I first came on the board, which was two years ago, November. So, I would strongly suggest that we do propose that there's no cost at this point in time. If that area is completed, it completes a road area for economic development. That economic development brings in taxes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which benefits the county. So, I recognize Mrs. Slaughter's concerns, and like her, I'll be tight on a dollar. But in this case, I think the dollar spent in completion of this will be an economic improvement to the county, which in the long run should help the county from tax revenues coming in, as well as the transportation issues there. So, I would support this.
Anyone else? Are we ready?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board supervisors approve the execution of the Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund agreement.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Laufman?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Next.
Yes, sir. This is another Transportation Opportunity Fund. However, in this one, we are seeking the permission to apply for the funds. We have been provided a cost estimate by VDOT for the construction portion of this project. If I can bring up the map, where our focus here is the intersection of Independence Drive and Millwood Pike, Route 5017. What this proposes to do is signalize the intersection, as well as numerous turn lane upgrades to the project, and this is in partnership with Navy Federal Credit Union, who Mr. Tim Markle is also here, representing them this evening, if you should have any questions for him. Specifically, what you're applying for is the signalization of the intersection itself, the widening and restriping of Independence Drive at the intersection, the westbound left-turn lane extension, and the eastbound right-turn lane extension, the eastbound left-turn lane extension, and upgrading of drainage to allow for a future double left. So, you're not putting in a double left on that eastbound movement at the intersection right now. However, you would be setting up for the future should property to the north develop. That would be more easily implemented. Now, in this scenario, assuming we're successful with the funding, Navy Federal will be doing the design, any right-of-way acquisition, any environmental studies that may be required, and basically handing VDOT a shovel-ready project, project that they can manage the construction on. And that's why we're using a VDOT cost estimate for the construction. Now, assuming you approve this, we would be looking to actually submit the application by early next week. As I noted, Mr. Markle is here. He can answer any questions you may have from Navy Federal. We are also working on a backstop agreement with Navy Federal to make sure that, as in the previous situation, we are simply seeking to be a conduit to achieve state funds. We're still working out the details of that agreement, but as in the previous situation, we would not be moving forward on a project until such time as we had an agreement that the board was satisfied with. All we're seeking today is the ability to apply.
Questions of Mr. Bishop? Supervisor Laufman?
Comment. Just want to make sure, this is not a revenue sharing...
Sir, Transportation Partnership Opportunity.
I just want to make everyone aware, this is not revenue sharing that we're looking at. This is a TPOF grant, which specifically spells out this amount of money with Navy Federal, picking up by agreement, all cost above and beyond that $1,290, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. And the reason we're doing this now is because Navy Federal has reached out to the governor's office, and that would suggest that they take that route.
That's correct, sir. We didn't, I didn't include that detail, but this is something that Navy Federal definitely has desired. We were working with them on it, frankly, before they contacted the governor's office. And then, after they had been in touch with the governor's office, the direction was to apply for funding through this program.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Bishop, anyone?
You want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Did anyone else want to add anything? If you'd like to add something, you're welcome to. If not, we're good.
He's good.
Good. Supervisor Fisher?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we have staff apply for these TPOF funds relating to this project.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion?
No, I would, if I may, just say that with this particular application, there is a backstop, and the taxpayers are not liable for cost beyond what we are recognizing here.
The backstop is not in place, but we are working on that backstop agreement and would have it to the board's satisfaction before we move forward with any actual project.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I can say here is with Navy Federal Credit as a partner working with us, we couldn't be in better hands, in my opinion. They've been great to work with, and we have a big need out there. It needs to be met, and they're stepping up to the plate, and this is a win-win.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Laufman?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Next, sir.
Last one, sir. Staff is seeking board authorization to request a transfer of the revenue sharing funds that currently exist on Valley Mill, the realignment of Valley Mill Road. I would note that that does not mean we are asking you to remove that from your eastern road plan or anything like that. However, the partner in that situation has indicated a desire not to move forward on the project, and due to the amount of time, those funds have been inactive. There is a need to move them to an active project. We are proposing to move them to the I-81 project, Russell 150 project, which includes Airport Road, the extension of, the roundabout, and the bridge over I-81.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Laufman?
Comment. I want everyone to know that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the funds we're going to transfer are the projects to, those funds will be matched by a revenue sharing partner. So, again, there's no Freddie County taxpayer money going into that.
Yes, sir. We have an agreement in place with that partner to where they would be matching anything we spend on that project. Frankly, if that project came in higher, they'd be grateful for us to have these funds on there because it reduces their exposure in that agreement. So, that's to the positive.
Other questions for Mr. Bishop? Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Bishop, this is the proposal that initially was designed to move Valley Mill over to Route 50 so that the one-lane bridge would no longer be accessed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, when the applicant says, and I thought that at the time, the applicant was going to then take that whole farm back into his own property, has that been totally discontinued?
There's no way to abandon that road without the new... That action still exists in terms of VDOT's promise to them that if this roadway were to get realigned, they could get that piece back. However, due to their not wanting to continue forward, that road needs to remain in the system until such time as we are able to have a realignment. So, it's not going to up and disappear on anybody.
Got a follow-up question. If at some future point in time, that applicant wants to go and consolidate his farm, which eliminates the road through it, instead put what was proposed here as the new road, if you will, to go over to Route 50, if these funds are removed from that, do we have to then go and reapply for those dollars? Or will similar dollars be put back into this if that scenario unfolds?
There's a scenario under which we could apply. If the board so chose, we could apply for new funds. However, these funds would not be able to just be transferred back. We would have to do a new application. Now, it is a proffered roadway, so if the applicant were to move forward with their development without benefit of revenue sharing, they would still need to build that piece of road.
And in that same area, you also have, like with Eddie's Lane, et cetera, a potential number of houses that are going to be built, which will flow down to Valley Avenue and then cross that bridge. So, if that new development is continued, are the fundings, funds there to connect through to Route 50 without going over that one-lane bridge? You're talking about a lot of houses, and then Mr. Bishop probably knows the number better than I, how do you address that traffic problem?
I believe the development you're referring to is, we often call it Hagerty. I think it's also called the Canyon. It has its own proffered roadway out onto the east side of where 37 is eventually going to be. So, as that were developed, they have a proffered road out to 7 that way.
So, they're going to take it to Route 7, essentially behind the wastewater station?
It's east of, I'm sorry, west of the sanitation station.
Okay.
But yes, between there and where 37 is going to be.
My only concern is that if they, if you move the money, which I have no objections to, I don't want that then to become a reason where you can't come back later because of the further development that's occurring in that very adjacent neighborhood, because that road is so small that you'd have huge traffic jams. That's all.
Yes, I understand. We wouldn't be able to just transfer these funds back because by doing that, we will be closing out the project. But the board always has the option to apply for funds again in the future, if you so chose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions of Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move that the board supervisors approve staff to go to the process of transferring funds from the Valley Mill Road Revenue Sharing Project to the bridge construction and Airport Road Extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Laufman?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we thank you for your patience. It was a marathon Transportation Committee meeting, and you just got the highlights of it, and that's all.
Well done. We appreciate all the hard work.
That finishes up my Transportation Committee report. And thank you, Mr. Bishop, for his participation.
Thank you, sir. All right. That will bring us to a series of public hearings. First, this proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 89, Fire and Rescue Services. Someone presenting?
Mr. Chairman, I can take it. This is a change, it's an enabling provision. A couple of years ago, there was an issue with the state in their processing of background checks for volunteer firefighters. The problem largely subsided, but in the meantime, the General Assembly did us a favor and added an additional authority to go, in essence, an alternate route in getting the background checks processed. But in order to take advantage of that authority, it requires passage of a local ordinance. So, this is that local ordinance, again, just simply to give fire and rescue an alternative in the event the problem reemerges with the state.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Mr. Williams? Anyone? All right. Would the board like to handle the...
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, public hearing. All right. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak concerning these proposed code amendments? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. How would the board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd move that the request be approved as read.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Laufman?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Item number two, proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 122, nuisances by the addition of Section 12211, methamphetamine lab cleanup and removal responsibility for cost. This one yours too, Mr. Williams?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
This is a somewhat similar situation. There are some means in place to, in the event the county has to expend costs to address a public health and safety situation. There are already some means in place, most notably restitution through the court process, but this is, in essence, per-enabling legislation that gives the county an additional legal right to recover those funds. It does not obligate the county to spend the funds in the first place. That would obviously be a decision that would have to be made on a circumstances basis. But again, this is a, there's enabling legislation at the state level, but to take advantage of it requires enacting a local ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Williams? How would the board like to handle the request?
Public hearing again.
Public hearing. It's a public hearing. But would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed code amendments? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
I'd move that the motion be approved as read, and the technical amendments be approved.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? All right. Motion is to adopt the code amendments. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Laufman?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. That will bring us to a proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Article 1, general provisions. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can introduce this if there are, I think if it gets more, if there are more detailed questions. I know the Commissioner of the Revenue is familiar with these and probably can answer them better than I. There are two primary changes here. One is to reflect that there is a filing requirement for personal property tax for mobile homes. As I think most everyone is aware, for the personal property tax, the, what commonly referred to as the car tax component of it, if nothing changes from year to year with a particular person's ownership of a particular vehicle, they don't have to re-report it to the commissioner every year. It's only when you bring a vehicle into the county, or take a vehicle out, or purchase a new vehicle, or dispose of a vehicle, that you actually have to report it. The state code allows a locality to provide that you don't have to report if nothing changes. But it does not, the state code does not cover mobile homes currently, so it doesn't allow for that exception, so therefore means that they do have to be reported on an annual basis, just in essence, like business personal property. So, this code change would make the county code clear and consistent with the state law. The commissioner has been following the state law practice to date. The other change would be to move the business personal property tax filing deadline from March 15 to March 1. And the commissioner's office has indicated some practical operational reasons for their office for doing so, and if, I think there's further questions on that, I'll defer to the commissioner.
All right. Questions of Mr. Williams? Anyone? Questions or further clarification from commissioner? Anyone? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed code amendments? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. The board like to handle this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we approve the amendment as read.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Slaughter? Supervisor Slaughter?
I do have one concern, and I did speak to Mrs. Murphy prior to our meeting. The only concern I have is that in paragraph B, we talk about taxable business tangible personal property. And typically, that has been filed by March 15, which is when S. corporations and partnerships are required to file their tax return, and it has consistently been applied in that fashion because of business tax returns. So I guess my concern is that if we change this to March 1, and accountants and CPAs are preparing these tax returns, and their deadline is March the 15, that it isn't giving them the additional time to make that preparation. And I guess the last thing I'd want to do is create ill will with our business taxpayers. So that would be my concern.
I understand that, and as we had spoken before, in some cases, people file Schedule C, so it isn't as applicable in those cases. We make ourselves available if they file a provisional form and put down what they have by the deadline. Then if their accountant says, oh, you left off this, or we need to remove this, you junked this, and you didn't tell me that, they can let us know that, there's no penalty involved, but they have filed by the appropriate amount of time. We have such a huge volume of filing now, it's almost impossible to get it in the system in time for the book if we do not have this deadline moved back a little bit to give us a little extra time. The current system, with most businesses now filing online with us, they automatically see what they filed last year. And there are real simple little buttons in places, they just remove item number four and item number 29 because they sold it. They stick on the bottom item number 51 and 52, or whatever, of things that they have added or bought. So it's not the old thing of where somebody is sitting there at midnight at home with a pencil and paper and trying to remember all the assets that they've reported in another year, because it's done technically much more efficient than that now. But it's definitely, or else call, whatever you would prefer, but it would give our staff considerably more time by having this move in the deadline, and it's still later than the personal property filing. It's still giving the businesses more time than the personal property filing is.
Are there other questions for Ms. Murphy?
Ms. Murphy, if we approve this today, this will go into effect, this will become effective by March 1 of 2018, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and we would send notices out to all businesses and let them know that.
So, being one of the files with you, I would just request that you do a really, a heavy announcement of that, so the businesses do know that.
Oh, we will.
And I would also request that this year only, maybe you delay any penalty if you can do that, if there's a legitimate reason why somebody either forgot, can't, I mean, if you could notify everybody, obviously, I'm getting my notice right now, but if for some reason a person's not aware, at least have some grace on that issue.
That would be up to the county attorney to let us know whether we could do that on a one-year basis.
And if you...
I have no objection to that, it's not, I'm not in the business of trying to collect penalty money, you know, from people or charge. I don't collect it anyway, the treasurer does, but I, you know, it's not my idea to try to charge penalty. It's just to try to get the job done by the deadline when we have to get the bills on the street.
We agree on that, and I don't want businesses to use this as an excuse either, so, no excuse, but for a legitimate situation, that's why, so if you can publicize it well, so if people really know it's March 1, as Mrs. Slaughter said, versus March 15, that could be helpful.
Mr. Williams, would that be legally, is that the way I could do that?
I don't know that there's any greater authority under that situation than there is now.
Okay.
So, to the extent there's an ability to exercise the authority now, there would be then, but otherwise, there's not.
I'll leave it to the Commissioner's judgment, I mean, if I can give you that authority, I'll just leave it to your judgment, to be gracious.
Yeah, I have no objection to that, as long as we make it clear that we're doing it for this year, and that, you know, they can't continually not file by the proper deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? All right, how would the public hearing?
We did it already.
So is there anyone who would like to comment concerning these proposed changes? Anyone at all?
I think you already have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
You already called it.
Did we do the public hearing? Half of it's on one page, half of it's on another. So, the motion was to adopt the changes, and it was seconded, and we were in discussion. And is there any further discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
I'm okay with half of it.
I don't know how to record that one.
So I guess that would be a no.
All right. Supervisor Wells?
Yes.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. That will bring us to Planning Commission Public Hearing, South Frederick Agricultural and Forestal District. Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to add three parcels totaling 178.5 acres to the South Frederick Agricultural and Forestal District. The district currently contains 6,070 acres, and this addition will increase the acreage of that Ag and Forestal District to 6,248.5 acres. The most recent renewal of this district was in 2016, and the next cycle to renew the district will be in 2021. If I can turn your attention to the map at your left, I'm going to zoom in a little bit here, there's the properties for you tonight to be included in the Ag and Forestal District. The yellow-colored district, it shows you the area of the South Frederick Agricultural and Forestal District, so it does meet that requirement. Obviously, the aerial map, it shows you outline the three properties. The Ag and Forestal Advisory Committee, or ADAC, has recommended adding the three parcels to the district at their August 23, 2017 meeting. The Planning Commission recommended adding these parcels to the district at their September 20th, 2007 meeting. Staff is seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on the addition of these parcels. That, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer any questions that you or the board members may have on this addition to the South Frederick Ag and Forestal District. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Chairman, anyone? Apparently not, sir, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed additions to the Agricultural and Forestal District? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
I would move that we approve the addition of the South Frederick Agricultural and Forestal District of 933 Barley Lane with the property identification numbers as enumerated in your packet for approval.
Motion to approve the addition, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Anyone? Are we ready? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is a informational item for subdivision request known as Freedom Crossing. This is a subdivision design plan in review, it's in lieu of a master development plan. The property currently contains 1.2751 acres of land of RP zone property. It is located at 357 Double Church Road in Stevens City area. It's in the packet magisterial district. If I could turn your attention to your map on your left, there's the zoning map, it's outlined in black, forces to aerial photograph to give you an idea where this is located. This would be a development that would consist of seven single-family attached units or townhouses, is located within the urban development area as identified in the comprehensive policy plan, and also the sewer water service area, and it is planned for residential uses. Access will be provided by a private internal street with access to Double Church Road. The plan accounts for right-of-way dedication for Double Church Road, sidewalks, landscaping, and buffers. This is a rendition of the proposed townhouses. The applicant previously received a waiver of our master development process requirement and has chosen the process of a subdivision design plan in lieu of that MDP. When processing a subdivision design plan in lieu of the MDP, the applicant must be presented to the Planning Commission, and the Board of Supervisors as an informational item. This proposed subdivision does meet the requirements of the Frederick County zoning and subdivision ordinance, and is in a format that can be administrative approval. The plan is presented as an informational item only, and there's no action necessary. Following its presentation to the Board of Supervisors, staff will process the application for approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy, of course, to answer any questions that you and board members may have on this application.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Chairman, anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
Question, would there be any, obviously, there might be an impact of the current civil suit going on that might affect this?
Yeah, there's nothing we can do on that, no, sir, but that's...
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Buffer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 165 of the zoning ordinance to modify our requirements for residential separation buffers in our RP or residential performance zoning district. Residential separation buffers are required to adequately buffer different housing types from dissimilar housing types within adjacent separate developments. The intent of this request is to provide flexibility for the development community for smaller infill type lots, ensuring the desired housing types and densities that are specified in our long-range land use plan, which is a part of our comprehensive plan. Staff has drafted a revision to the zoning ordinance to modify the required buffer category between single-family detached units and townhome units, and single-family small lot attached and detached units and townhome units. This amendment would effectively change the required buffer category from a Category B type buffer to a Category A type buffer. As an overview, this does not change the requirements within each buffer category, but simply changes the type of buffer that would be required. For a full-screen buffer, which includes a landscape screen and a six-foot-tall fence, wall, mound, or berm, a Category B buffer requires a total of 50 feet in distance between the housing type and the property line. A Category A type buffer effectively is half as much distance, or 25 feet, between the housing type and the adjacent property line. Our Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this amendment at length at their April, May, July, and August meetings, and the DRCRRC agreed with the proposed changes. The Planning Commission discussed this item on September 20 and agreed with the proposed changes. Staff is seeking direction this evening from the Board of Supervisors as to whether this item is ready to be sent to public hearing. I'm happy to speak to any questions you may have. I'll conclude by noting that this was a request from a private developer. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Klein? Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Klein, you made the comments that this is a, provides flexibility for housing. I happen to live in Redbud, which is the most heavily populated magisterial district in the county. People that have moved into Redbud have moved in there from other areas, and they had an idea of what they were getting, i.e., single-family homes or townhomes, et cetera. This change here would make that area more dense by this proposal, and in a previous discussion I had with you, I understand that this is not site-specific, but across the board, correct?
Correct. This is a change to the zoning ordinance, so it would apply to all RP zone property across the county.
So one of the questions, so one of the questions that I raised with my fellow supervisors is that the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have laid out criteria on what they think is appropriate, and in this case, you're going and trying to shrink that separation, whereas a developer could, if he could parcel together enough parcels, meet the current zoning. So I just have some concerns on increasing the density in an already dense area, even though it would be the same through the county. And you go to cities like New York or Philadelphia, you can literally walk down some areas, put your hands on both walls, and touch them, the zoning is that tight. Here, it's a lot wider, so was there any thought process or reasoning on why you're making the suggested change? I'm not putting this personally.
Sure.
But you're definitely increasing the density in certain areas.
I think, I think it's twofold. I think we have planned density for certain areas of the county, and in this case, the type of lots that the development community has expressed are challenging to planning staff, are small infill type lots. Infill type lots typically have a smaller road frontage, they're deeper lots, that makes when you have, you know, only 200 feet of road frontage, and you're adding a 50-foot buffer on either side, you're effectively only, you're limiting yourself to, you're limited to only about 50 feet of developable area in the middle, and trying to locate houses and other improvements that are otherwise required of our subdivisions creates a challenge. In some cases, the developer is able to acquire additional lots to make that lot longer and wider. In certain cases, they're not, and it creates these kind of areas that weren't otherwise planned and we originally intended to include the buffer requirements. Again, this is an opportunity to encourage the type of density and housing that we have planned for in our comprehensive plan in the areas of the county that we anticipate that growth being located. It doesn't change the amount of density that's allowed, it just allows for a developer to utilize the full amount of density that would otherwise be allowed on each individual property.
Makes it more dense in certain areas at the expense of other areas.
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
Again, this is a, it's an opportunity to provide some flexibility to our development community as far as the intent of the buffer to provide a separation and a physical barrier between different types of housing. It still fulfills that requirement because you'd still be required to do the required plantings and provide a six-foot-tall fence, wall, berm, or other screening feature.
But if this, if this did not go into effect, you're still going to have development, you're still going to have a density increase in the urban development area as specified, it's just going to be a little bit less than what this would allow.
Correct, yes, sir.
Other questions? Supervisor Slaughter?
The only other thing I would like to ask is, you had a slide up there that actually listed the buffer amounts between A and B, which was not in our packet. Could you maybe give us the difference of what you're proposing?
Sure. The categories that you see in the slide are the current categories of the zoning ordinance. We're not changing the amount of distance that is required for the inactive or active portion of each buffer category within the zoning ordinance, that remains unchanged. What we're effectively doing in the matrix for the buffer requirements is where a Category B type buffer would otherwise be required between single-family, and single-family small lot, and townhomes, we're taking, we're changing it from a Category B type buffer, which would require 50 feet of separation, and we're reducing that to a Category A type buffer, which requires less separation distance.
So you're reducing it by half?
Effectively, yes. It depends on the type, but for general principle, it's in half, correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Anyone? The request is, go ahead, Supervisor Dunn.
One other question. In the county, approximately, how many areas are hit with a Type B versus Type A? The better question, the better question is, how many areas are currently zoned with the Type A in a residential area?
The residential separation buffer requirement applies to property that is zoned RP or residential performance. I don't necessarily know if I could quantify.
Okay.
How many of those buffers we have.
Okay.
But effectively, anything that's been developed prior to this request has fulfilled a Category B type buffer where it's been required.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, so the request is to send it forward for public hearing by resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move it be forwarded to public hearing.
I've motioned to forward to public hearing and adoption of the resolution in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor?
This, my memory isn't this short, because one of the biggest flaps I ever had was over having townhouses, and it was a kind of a by right thing, the way things have been developed. But to cut this buffer down between townhomes and single families from 50 to 25, I won't support it. It's crazy, it's not the kind of density I think we're talking about in our comprehensive plan. I don't think it's appropriate for our county, and I can't support this any way, shape, or form.
Sir? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
Like Mr. Fisher, I have concerns, especially because I live in Redbud. People that have come into Redbud expected a certain density situation here. I understand that it helps developers, but I think those developers can parcel together land, so I'm not in favor of this. And I'm not putting it forward to a public hearing because I'm not prepared to go and support this. If the Planning Department wants to come back with something further, I can discuss it, but I don't think I can support this at this time.
All right, sir?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that I support going to the public hearing. I'd like to hear what the public has to say. I'm not saying I'll support the resolution after the public hearing, but I would like to hear what the public has to say about it, so that's why I support the public hearing motion.
Motion, just forward to public hearing, thank you. And a second? And a second? Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
I guess I'll listen to what they have to say, but I really don't like the fact that it's reduced in half either, so, but I certainly think the public should have an opportunity to weigh in, so I will vote aye.
Okay, Supervisor Wells?
I agree with Mr. Fisher. I certainly don't want to say, I don't want to hear what the public has to say, but I think in this case that it's just not a good idea.
think in this case that it's just not a good idea, and I vote no.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
I've heard my public, no.
Thank you. Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. We'll go to public hearing. Make a decision after that. All right, so, getting closer. Resolutions, board liaison reports, are there any? Anyone? Board liaison? Citizen comments on any subject whatsoever? Thank you, sir.
Yes, Alan Morrison from Jamesboro District. Several times in the course of the meeting tonight, I heard the board express concern about the county taxpayers, about spending funds that would eventually be falling back on the county taxpayer, accepting grant money that could be rolled over to the county taxpayer, and I certainly do appreciate the board's efforts in trying to maintain and control that aspect of it. However, from my perspective, there is a major fallacy in this argument. The money is coming from federal grants, or state grants, or matching grants, or whatever. To me, it doesn't matter if the county treasurer is reaching into my pocket, the state treasurer, or the federal treasurer. We're still spending money. Many cases, money we don't have. People have the impression that since it's grant money, it's free, and dear hearts, there is nothing free anymore. So I do, while I do appreciate what you're doing, we have to tone down the language on the grants. It's not free money. It's costing me at some point in the process, and it needs to be money spent on very worthwhile projects, and not money spent because people simply think this is something they read in a magazine article, and we ought to try it here. The transportation brief version that Mr. Bishop gave today highlighted some of this in my mind. We're talking about trying to control traffic flow into Winchester and out of Winchester that comes through Frederick County. You cannot get into and out of the city of Winchester at certain hours of the day already. So we're going to be spending state money, in some cases, there may be federal money involved as well, to make some changes that will allow further and future development. I see this as either a catch-22 or a Trojan horse, depending on how you want to look at it. The future development will increase cost to the county, schools, services. We build more roads. The roads we built aren't sufficient. We have to change, modify, expand, add additional lanes, and then we put in more development, and the process starts all over again. We have a comprehensive plan that is, in my opinion, wide open. We say we get tax revenue from these businesses, it's a smokescreen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone like to comment on any subject at all? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Shannon Trout, Shawnee District. I would just like to comment that I'm disappointed at the board's decision not to accept the federal funds for the preschool program, especially since the program was already started with 285,000 in funds, and it started in the county. And just like the previous citizen said, that money is coming from the taxpayer already, it's federal funds, so why isn't it being put to use in our own county here? Preschool programs benefit a child in ways that we cannot even imagine. There's more growth that happens for a child in their fundamental, their early years than any other time in their life, socially, academically, physically, motor skills, and so to deny that to the future of our children in this county is despicable and very disappointing, and I just wanted to voice that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone at all? All right, board of supervisors' comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Morrison. It's not free money. It's our money, and I look at the chances we get to get grant money, to get some of our money back in our community, and until the federal and state government stops taking it out of your pocket and our pocket to distribute it back to us, I'll keep taking it until they change their ways. But I do agree, it's not free money. It's our money, and I'd like to get it back.
Supervisor Dunn?
We have a lot of public employees, and one of them is Gloria Puttenberger. She works hard, works in public works, but last Saturday, I met her volunteering her time on a shredding operation. She wasn't there representing the county, she was there helping the county, or helping a private group doing paper shredding of her own time, her own efforts, and just appreciate that type of work ethic, that type of giving back that she did. So I just want to recognize, you know, her efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Vice Chairman Fisher?
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, will stand adjourned. For approval?